Thank you for joining us this morning for our city council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the room?
Bates.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Last.
Here. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number two is artificial intelligence policy discussion. Information technology staff will be present to propose artificial intelligence AI policy for consideration.
I'm looking for my staff.
I was thinking the same thing.
They're all AI.
Yeah, we won't go there. Mayor, Council, Chris Sorensen, CIO for the city. I've been asked to talk a little bit about AI today and specifically a draft policy to add to our handbook. But before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about AI and some background. First off, how many of you use AI in your life?
I think all of us.
Okay, if you didn't raise your hand, you do. Surprisingly, it's there and it has blown up in the last couple of years in the news and in its usage. I recently attended a conference and we were lucky enough to have Duncan Wardle, who used to be the former head of innovation creativity at Disney, as the keynote speaker. And he gave us some information about AI that I found interesting. I'd like to just share a couple of quotes from his book. One of the things he says is, "We're all going to need to become reacquainted with our inherent, if dormant, creativity, empathy, curiosity, and imagination." He says that this is what will become some of the most employable skill sets of the next decade, as they will be the hardest skills to program into AI. Think about that, that how powerful AI is going to be, that it is going to be able to replace much of our work capacity. However, the things it is not going to be able to replace, at least currently, is our creativity, empathy, curiosity, and imagination. Computers just can't do that yet. They're not cognitive, they don't have that ability. He also said, "The world is changing at an unprecedented rate. The pandemic and generational shifts have accelerated that. In a post-pandemic, climate-changing, AI world, we're not going back to business as usual. We're going back to business as unusual and roll into those who can't or won't change with the times. There is an imperative, a necessity, for individuals and huge corporations alike to adapt and to innovate. That goes for everyone, from the backhoe operator to the CEO." And what I found interesting is he kind of highlights, "This is going to happen whether you believe it or not. Those are going, those people that want to change or don't want to change." So AI is coming whether we like it or not. It's here and it's going to continue to accelerate. But the one thing we need to do is establish some basic parameters as we go forward. Thirty-five years ago, AI was just a word that some academia used. When I was at the Air Force Institute of Technology thirty-five years ago, one of my classmates's thesis was on the use of artificial intelligence to do battlefield assessments. Very groundbreaking thought process. Nobody had had thought about that. AI was just this term out there that was kind of cool, but nobody even began to comprehend. And then all of a sudden it started, in the last few years, it started to just develop. ChatGPT came out about two, two and a half years ago. And with ChatGPT, everything exploded. Everybody started using it. I started playing with a lot more. I've written love songs for my wife, I've had it composed of music for my wife, and my wife has let me know she doesn't appreciate it because she realizes I don't have that kind of talent. And she quickly realized it was AI generating all this wonderful poetry and such that I do. I'm a photographer and I use AI every day in my photography to highlight and enhance and to remove things I don't like. And it's all AI-based. But along with that comes some real serious concerns because the better AI gets, the more we're going to have to worry about it from a cybersecurity perspective. What's real and what's not real. The old day phishing tests, phishing schemes and stuff would come in and they would have misspellings and grammar, and they were so obvious that they were phishing schemes. Today, I even have to double-check everything because those days are gone. The phishing tests, the phishing schemes are becoming more and more inherently perfect almost, and they're capturing a lot of us. So we've got to continue to be careful there. Deep fakes, making something look real when it's not real, is another issue that criminals are using. But when you want to step outside of the criminal realm, you have to look into what they call data hallucination. And data hallucination happens when somebody relies on artificial intelligence to help them create a document, but the information that is provided isn't necessarily true. And that's where some of our biggest risks are. Constant news stories, in fact, there was one this just past week down in Utah where another lawyer is being disbarred because they wrote their brief using artificial intelligence and it cited case studies that don't exist. And what happened is the lawyer took that, presented it, sent it, used it in whatever form, and what was caught when somebody went to the references and realized these cases don't even exist. That means if you're going to use AI, the onus of the responsibility for using that goes back to the user that's using it to double-check and verify everything that comes out of that AI-generated response. And so that's what kind of has led us to where we're at right now. We've had some departments come to the mayor and to me looking at wanting to use AI for various tools, various software tools to do various things. And the mayor realized we don't have a policy in place to help guide and direct us in when we use this. And I'm not talking just generative AI. Generative AI is when you go out to ChatGPT or Bing or one of the others that are out there and you ask it a question and it comes back and gives you a really nice, well-written response. We're also talking stuff that can look at everything from facial recognition technology, biometric data collection, surveillance systems, autonomous vehicles, social media scraping, various things that are much more than just what most of us are familiar with when it comes to the generative AI piece. So as these departments have come to the mayor and to me, and again, the mayor's asked for something to be developed. However, this past year, the legislature here in Idaho looked at and considered regulating our ability to regulate AI at the local and the government level. And so it was advised at present time that we don't develop a overarching deep AI guidance policy for fear that the legislature may come back and make that policy invalid. So what we've decided to do is to develop just a basic policy for employees that will hold them accountable to verify that the information that they provide that was generated by the AI is correct and accurate and that it's being utilized appropriately. With that policy in place, and the policy also directs my department, to then develop a operational guidance directive, something that won't have to come to you all on a regular basis, but that will provide just basic guidance and on how to use AI, some safe practices, some common acceptable practices for using AI in the workplace. So we come to you with this basic policy and you should have it in front of you. It's only about ten lines in length, it's just three bullets. Says generative artificial intelligence is authorized for use by city employees to aid in the accomplishment of their assigned duty and mission. Employees must always validate the accuracy of the AI output to ensure that the AI engine provides valid data information before publishing, releasing, and using the data or information for any decision-making within the city. The information technology department, working with other departments, will develop and update a living artificial intelligence operational guidance directive that will be adjusted periodically as AI technologies progress over time. So that is what we are proposing to get added to the handbook. We want it to come to you and get your thoughts and feelings on it. And if you so direct, we will then bring it to a regular council meeting through HR to have it added to the employee policy handbook.
Councilmember Cheatham, did you have some? And Councilmember Nichols.
Two issues, Mr. Mayor. Chris mentioned the state looking at AI. Yesterday, I received a note from the Legislative Services Office that they're going to adopt a single AI platform to be used by the state. So everybody won't be able to go out and pick the platform they prefer. Right now, the choice is two, and I think that's a good idea. It enables our people in IT to become experts in a single platform, and if somebody has problems or we need to do training, there's just enough difference in these various platforms. From what I understand, I don't use them, haven't had a need yet. But I think we need to be more specific so that when it comes time to train departments on how to use this stuff and implement a policy like this, we have experts in our IT departments and everybody jumping out there and everybody using something different.
Again, I think you're talking, and I'm sure they're talking specifically for generative AI, not all the other different things that I mentioned, that use AI but aren't commonly used, so.
Yeah. The other, the other thing that I'd like to make a point of, one of the things I didn't like in the proposal in front of us, that this would be done without council adoption. And I think that's a mistake. I think if we're going to adopt public policy for the city, any changes in a policy needs to come before this council at every step.
The item mentioned without your coming to you would be just the operational guidance. It wouldn't be policy, it would be just operational guidance that we wouldn't bring to you because that's going to be changing probably monthly.
I'm okay with that. If we have a work session and we talk about those things so that staff knows it's happening and the public knows what we're doing with AI, I think this is such a powerful tool we need to be very cautious moving into this arena.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols.
So just curious, did AI write the AI policy?
No. However, the, the draft operational guidance used a template. And surprisingly, templates really, I mean, we've been using templates for years. Templates are kind of an artificial intelligence, it's just used differently. And just like anything else, you're going to take that template and you're going to massage it and make it, correct it, and you better, if it references specific things, you better make sure that they, like if it references a city or a state, you want to make sure it's your city and state and not the one that was in the template.
Yeah, and I was just joking more than anything. But I do have another question. Is AI being used much throughout the city? Do you know?
My gut feel is, is people have been using it to, and HR might be able to confirm or not confirm, but my gut feel is probably for some of our job descriptions and position descriptions, I would imagine some people have been using it. When I have composed a letter or something, I might go out and use it to give me some basic words or something. And really, almost any Google search you do now is AI. Yeah, a lot of times Gemini or chat or whichever one is based on, depending on which search engine you're using, it's going to generate you a response versus just giving you links.
Right. All right, thank you.
The search function within Meta is now completely AI. And it gives more information and more detail, like if you just want to search for a person and then you get all this, you know, detailed explanation of anything that seems to be remotely related. It's more than I would ever want in a simple search. It's irritating.
I use a new search engine called DuckDuckGo because it helps eliminate some of the tracking and different things. And I noticed yesterday or the day before that it's now using Gemini to generate an artificial intelligence response to my queries.
But I do have a question for you. I was just thinking about what Councilmember Cheatham said about that we become, and I realize you're talking about, this would relate to generative AI, that use, but that we sort of limited or narrowed the scope in a way that our people become experts in that. And I think there's something to be said for that. But then I was thinking about maybe, I'm starting to think how to say this, possible negative, a downside to that, let's say. And I'm wondering, you can tell me if it is or not, but if you become so focused on what we choose to use and become experts in that, is there a danger in that other people out there are using other things and we're not becoming experts in those areas? You know, when you think about it in relation to cybersecurity, it's what you don't know that is more of a threat. So I was just thinking about that.
Yeah, and I would concur with that. When you start limiting, if you limit it based on certain standards, for example, there's an ISO international standard organization that guides AI. And if the tool meets the ISO standards, it should be acceptable throughout. There's a few right now that meet the ISO standard, but they're all working towards qualifying to be certified with that standard. And right now, it's a free tool, so I'm not sure why you would want to limit who uses what because it's not costing you. Back in the old days, and I date myself with many of you, in the early days of computers in the Air Force and the rest of the world, every time you transferred or you changed offices, you had to learn a new system. You had Microsoft system, you had the original Word, you had a program called Enable that would actually try to bring everything together like Microsoft did a few years later, and they were told you couldn't ever do it. You had WordPerfect, you had all these different products. And depending on either what base you went to, and even on a base, you'd go around and it would be different. Finally, the Air Force said enough's enough. We're going to go Microsoft, Microsoft only, and we're going to stick with it. Years ago, you all did that, the same thing here between Microsoft and WordPerfect. You finally said enough is enough, we're tired of working with multiple platforms and having to share data that wasn't going across. And you finally said, "We're a Microsoft city." And we have been since then. A few of you like to still dabble with Macintosh-type items and apples and things, but we tolerate it and we work the best we can. But if I had my way, we'd be totally Microsoft, just because it simplifies the skill set. But when it comes to artificial intelligence right now, especially this early on with AI, I would hope that the state doesn't force us into a single platform as opposed to maybe certain standards that we have to, the companies have to adhere to.
So Chris, what I would recommend is finding out, reaching out to the person at the state and finding out exactly what they mean.
Okay. Well, what they're doing is, if I may, Mr. Mayor, they send out a questionnaire and ask, "Choose between these two. Which one are you most familiar with? Which one would you prefer to use?" And they're going to make that the standard at this time for use within the state. So, you know, it could change down the road, and I think that this policy could say, "We're going to use X AI platform." And if down the road, somebody develops something better, we can change. But I just think that we need a standard so that your people become experts in it. And if somebody has a problem or there's a question about data that's generated, we can go back and say, "Okay, here's what you should have noticed, you should have looked at." You know, it just becomes easier because it's, and I don't use, I haven't had a need to use it personally outside of search engines. And I just think that in talking to other people, that if we would standardize, we would make our people cooperatively better at what they do and simplify this whole process.
Do you see the state pushing that standard down to the agency level, which would include cities or just at the state level?
The email I got just concerned legislative services and all of the bills that are written and all the things that are done to enact, you know, legislation within the, within the Capitol Building. But I could see that happen down the road, and it would not surprise me to see a bill introduced this session that attempts to do that. There's some, there are some software experts in the legislature. Kevin Cook from Idaho Falls is one. And he has been pushing some, not this, but some other things, and I could see that happening, that the state jumps in and says, "Okay, we're going to use this platform, guys, and that's the only one we're going to use," so that they can better control the information that's generated.
Council President.
Comment? And maybe it's a difference between our overall staff in the city and what they use and how they use it, and that's kind of what this policy is aimed at versus IT staff and knowing what's out there and knowing how to use it. Like we, I think the idea of a standard for staff to use every day can be a good thing. But the idea of you guys becoming so focused on one thing and not kind of keeping up with everything else that's out there in order to be prepared for any potential cybersecurity attacks, does that make sense to have like a different approach within the department?
It probably makes some sense, but I, we're not creating the policy today.
Yeah.
It's not being passed today. Recommendation would be, reach out to the state, see what the state's doing and see that, and consider some of these questions that are being asked, and then we'll have some better answers for them and stuff. I think is, is going to be our best bet with that.
The intent of this was to just get a basic policy in place now that we could modify as we gain more and additional information. We just felt like with everybody wanting to use it, we wanted to make sure there was at least a basic policy in place that says, "You are ultimately responsible this time for anything that's generated by AI." And then as time goes on, we can develop more and either put it into policy or we can do it through an operational guidance directive.
Sure. All right, Councilmember Paulson, and then Councilmember Bates.
I agree with Councilmember Cheatham that I think this body should be more involved as it goes on, but otherwise, I think this looks good with putting the responsibility on the individual.
I just had a question, Chris, about where you see the biggest growth for the city. Like, is this going to affect all departments or is there going to be one area of the city that will use this more often?
I cannot think of a department that could not utilize or won't be utilizing AI. And I will promise you that in ten years from now, our workforce is going to look a lot different as a result of AI.
Yeah.
There are going to be positions that are eliminated, it'll be positions that'll change significantly. And again, like Duncan Wardle said, from the CEO to the backhoe operator.
Well, I'm sure so many of the systems that we already use, that, you know, planning or finance uses already has AI integrated into those.
Somewhat, and they want even more so. One of the tools we're looking at actually is a tool that'll help them reconcile basically the checkbook and letting the artificial intelligence come in and be able to look and say, "Look, you have this deposit for $785, but it actually involved six different checks." And the AI will actually be able to go out and using AI match up and know what was in that deposit without you even telling it what was in that deposit.
So with that being said, I just, this policy's not going to be, I just don't want to be restrictive. I think, you know, there's pros and cons to AI, but my opinion on the whole, it makes life easier.
Yes.
And so I just want to make sure our policy, and I'm glad, I mean, this is very early stages, right? So, but I just don't want us to, that'd be my fear, is that down the road, we create a policy that makes it more restrictive to use these systems that are going to make life easier and cheaper.
Yes, very much.
For the city, so.
And again, that's why we're not really using anything, putting anything restrictive in this policy at this time. We're just, we're just trying to put the responsibility on the shoulders of the users to verify that the data is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Mangum.
Thank you, Chris, for your effort in this. I think that creating a standard is really, is very appropriate, but restriction is probably dangerous because each department will, so for example, the GIS server and information that we're replacing, it's going to come with its own certain amount of AI technology implemented in it. And so if we were to create a standard and say, "You can only use this or this," then it limits us in our ability to go out and to get new products or new software for each department to then use. Is that correct? Does that sound?
I believe that is correct.
So, so like in banking, as we're rolling out new processes and new softwares and new, all kinds of other stuff, AI is automatically implemented into some of these softwares or some of these pieces that we're using. And it would almost be impossible to extract it from it and then push the rest of the product out. And so I think that's why the standard, having a standard of this is what you can and can't do within, or you're responsible for what you develop, because creating a text or a sheet or a template is one thing, but when it comes to creating, you know, like you said, with pictures, removing an image or an item out or a person out, you're responsible for those things. And so I think that it's, it's really appropriate to have a standard versus, you know, we restrict to one platform or one.
And along with that, we may somewhere down the road, and working with legal, as we look at contracts and stuff for software and different hardware and different innovation, put it in there, that a couple of things. One is that we're not going to allow them to scrape our data and use our data to build their models and their search capabilities. We are, the city is a member of a group called the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, and they're quite huge. They're, I think they're over eighty-five hundred members now, cities and states that are part of this group. And whenever they have a webinar or anything, one of the first things they do at the very beginning is you will not turn on an AI chat robot to scrape their data. And those are things that down the road, we're going to make sure we want to include, that you're not taking our data to help build your engines and things, so we can protect the security, the integrity, the confidentiality, and the availability of our data.
Council President.
I was just thinking about the point about responsibility for like checking and making sure that it's correct information and things, that's a very important aspect. And when I think about the legal ramifications of using AI, and obviously what happened to this attorney is a good example of that. But I use AI primarily creatively. I do a lot of graphic design work and things that you used to have to do by yourself, you know, like create images and things to use. You can now make life easier, as Councilmember Bates said, and save a lot of time by having AI create things for you. So there's a different aspect to responsibility for what you're creating, and it's almost, it's sort of a flip side of saying, you know, checking things, but saying, "I didn't create this image." You know, like creatively, it's important to me when I save time and have AI create an image for me to use, I want to say that I didn't create that, you know? And so making it known, and you see this on, in, in documents or on images where you would normally have photo credits or design credits or something, now it will say AI-generated. And I think that's an important aspect, too.
And the ethics and the laws are changing on that, too. I believe some of the recent rulings under the Copyright Office are that when you use AI to generate or help you with a photo, you don't have to give credit because it's you as the artist that's actually using the tool to develop. So under a legal perspective, you may not have to. Under an ethics perspective, you may want to identify. And that may be something a lot like in the guidance as we generate, that if you use something to wholly create a document, that you say, "AI was used to help generate or assisted in the generation of this product." But that comes down to ethics and legal ramifications.
And it might come out in, as we develop the policy and how we use it, but if we're using it in these different ways, those are all going to be questions that could have legal ramifications that I would think we would want to be aware of.
And then that's another reason why we didn't want to put this all in policy, because if we did, there's so many different aspects of this, that the AI section of the policy handbook would be bigger than the rest of the handbook as a whole. And it doesn't make sense to do that. We have guidebooks, we have directions and stuff in every department, but we don't put it in policy. We have operation manuals for a backhoe, but we don't put that operational manual in the handbook.
Okay, Councilmember Mangum. Okay, Councilmember Mangum.
So we're not ruling anything out.
We're not ruling anything out.
We're just proposing an idea and then we're gonna.
You're going to be the last because Chris has a pretty good idea of what the council feels.
That's all I was saying. We're not doing or just.
Go ahead.
That's it. That was it. I said what I had to say. Thanks, Chris.
He changed in the middle of his thing is what he did.
We're not going to change this a whole lot.
Okay, you're, I think we have an idea of what the council's looking at and what they'd like to see. And so as you redo this and stuff, we'll we'll take a look at it and we'll go from there.
Okay.
You and I'll work on it.
And I'll talk to you more to get better understanding because maybe you understand them better than I do.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's crystal clear to me kind of where they're where they're going. So, all right, sounds good. Thank you, Chris. Then we'll move to agenda item number three is Housing Trust Fund Grant Affordable Housing 429 Washington Avenue. Planning and Development Services staff members will be present, will present a grant opportunity provided through the Idaho Housing Trust Fund that is administered by Idaho Housing and Finance Association. The Housing Trust Grant would provide funding for the construction of affordable housing at 429 Washington Avenue. I don't have any idea how many times we said housing and things like that in that three sentence thing, but it was a lot.
It's about housing.
I wonder, I was wondering.
Morning, Mayor, Members of the City Council, Christine Algrants, Manager.
Brent McLean, I'm the Planning Development Services Director.
Rhiannon Avery, Home Programs Manager with Idaho Housing and Finance Association. And thank you for giving us an opportunity to present on the Housing Trust Fund as it relates to potentially using this funding source for some development of affordable housing at 429 Washington Ave. So just as way of background, the Housing Trust Fund program is administered from the from Idaho Housing and Finance Association. They receive those funds from HUD through proceeds made on, I believe, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac loans. So states around the country are able to access Housing Trust Funds and have these programs in place. And our Idaho Housing Trust Fund provides funding for the construction of affordable rental housing specifically for those earning 30% of the area median income or below. And in early or late March, Rhiannon had reached out to the state's community development block grant entitlement communities, noting that there was an opportunity to apply for some Housing Trust Fund program, program funding that was available. So the application for that funding was due in early April. As staff, we immediately started trying to brainstorm some projects that might fit within that initial funding request. So you can see, we we looked at primarily is an opportunity to potentially continue the redevelopment of the Monarch Building that we've been working with the P D A on and through our Brownfield Program in downtown. We also considered if there was opportunity to purchase and redevelop any commercial sites into mixed use and then even noted some city-owned properties such as the one at 735 North Main where the Bannequie Foundation is housed and the 429 Washington Ave property. We ran these projects by Rhiannon and talked about kind of our thoughts particularly for the Monarch as one of our our top potential options there and didn't just just didn't quite fit the timeline and request for that initial round of funding that had been solicited. And so we, you know, we kind of thought this was this was over, but fortunately, Rhiannon reached out and said that there was additional funding that I H F A had through the H T F program, some kind of older funding that would allow us to potentially do the redevelopment at 429 Washington, which was the kind of best fit for this type of of funding in terms of the project timeline and the goal to construct that affordable housing for that 30% A M I population. So by way of background on kind of how Washington Ave came up, the city, as you know, has its Brownfield Assessment Grant. We're in year three of that grant program. And so in 2025, earlier this year, we used some of that Brownfield money to conduct a phase one environmental assessment on that property and also conducted a regulated building materials study. It was discovered that there is some regulated building materials in the in the building, including asbestos and lead-based paint. And when we went in to conduct that site visit with our hired consultants, we learned that a pipe had burst in the basement of the facility and had caused quite a bit of water damage. And there was also a lot of weather damage present. And I'll kind of go through the existing conditions of the building a little later and some additional slides. So now we have this property that has been essentially vacant since 2022. That is in extreme disrepair in in the interior specifically. 429 Washington was is a city-owned property. It was originally part of the old Alameda Town Site, so it was never formally platted. But that whole section of properties there at the corner of Washington and Walnut are city-owned and have various uses with different structures on them. So we would just focus on where 429 Washington is located. This was the site of the Alameda Fire Station. It later became the Pocatello Free Clinic, which is probably how most folks remember its most its latest use. And then in more recent history, Big Mama's House had a program operating out of that facility, but they sort of dissolved that program in late 2021, early 2022. So it has been unused and vacant since 2022. As mentioned, we didn't initially have a project that was viable for the Housing Trust Funds, but we were able to, you know, coordinate with I H F A and come up with a potential project that would help achieve some of those goals. So the funds available through the Housing Trust Fund Program are just over $1 million and they can be used toward site clearance, demolition, developing those engineering or architectural plans for the housing and then construction of those units on the property. And part of the reason we're pursuing this is because of some of the goals that the city has adopted. So in our comprehensive plan, we have our authentic and affordable neighborhoods goal, specifically goal number four. And you can, you know, you're all very familiar with the plan, I'm sure at this point, but essentially we want to increase access and availability of decent and suitable housing and particularly focus on some ways to create more affordable housing. In addition, our C D B G consolidated plan has a number of of housing-related goals and this will help us address some of those affordable housing needs and provide and increase the supply of units. So I wanted to go through some of the existing conditions at the property and just for folks who aren't very familiar with where it's located or what it looks like, just so you can get a sense of where this property stands at this time. And so this is the the view from Washington, the exterior. You can see there is there is a ramp that leads to the inside of the building. However, when, you know, we've talked to the folks at the Free Clinic who used to operate out of here and there's still stairs once you get into that main entrance. So it is not exactly accessible and most folks who did were mobility impaired had to enter through the lower entrance. But this, I'll just kind of quickly go through some of these existing condition, conditioned photos so you can get a sense of what it looks like. On the left-hand side, you can see that original kind of cinder block structure and that was the portion of the building that was the firehouse. Just some more views here. You can see there's sort of an accessory garage structure on the site as well. And so the building to get in, you have to go through the back door. So these are the rear stairs and you can see there's quite a bit of mold and damage on those stairs. This is that main entry off of the front A D A ramp. You can see there's quite a bit of damage on the carpet and the interior. Again, just kind of going through to show you that there's significant weather damage that would require essentially full abatement within this this building. That demonstrates some of the old lighting. These stairs are, you sort of have to go up, you plateau and there's two rooms and then you go down just to show how kind of narrow these stairwells are and, you know, it's it's an older building that's been sort of coupled together with different design elements. So it would make for quite challenging to create, you know, A D A compliance and accessibility. Some old old bathroom photos, you can see some weather damage there, broken windows, just interior damage that we've we're documenting here. So it would require quite a bit of extensive work to get this into a habitable condition. This is some of the old wood windows where they tested positive for the lead-based paint. Again, just kind of going through kind of the layout so you can get a sense of what this facility looks like on the interior. You can see some of the asbestos insulation coming through that vent on the right-hand photo. Additional damage to the carpet and then significant mold damage on the walls. I would not advise anyone to go into this building without proper P P E. But all of that moisture and weather damage, and this is on kind of the second lowest level, so we aren't quite in the basement yet. But there's just substantial damage in this building. See that ceiling came down because of the the weather damage there. Quite extensive. Lots of mold damage require again full abatement. And you can see there's still some lingering water damage there from that burst pipe, quite a bit of mold in this basement area, the old furnace facility. So what we're proposing on the site would be demolition of that existing structure. And we've had Jim, our long-range planner, come up with a few potential concept designs to see if we in fact could fit multiple units on this site. Because as you know, now there's just the one, the one facility and part of the program goal here is to increase the amount of affordable housing we're able to provide. So Jim was able to rough out this concept and get essentially three single-family units facing Washington and have an accessory dwelling unit above a garage in the rear that would be accessible by the alleyway. And so that would allow for potentially six units that could be rented. And you can see there's kind of a fourth lot that is a little narrower that we would have to see if it would it would fit and meet, you know, standards for for development there. But this is just a example of what could be constructed on the lot so we could aim for up to potentially six units of affordable housing to be added to the city's available housing. And so.
Christine, when she's done.
Oh, never mind.
Next steps. And Rhiannon, please jump in if you have additional info on this because you guys are the experts on what would happen through this process. We would essentially finish the environmental review and then concurrently where we would have to amend our C D B G plan, which we have an amendment out now for for adding the Housing Trust Funds. So if this body were to move forward with this project, we would formally amend our plan to add those funds and then execute the legal documents with I H F A so that they could then transfer the funds to the city. And then we would begin the project, which would again include architectural plans for the the housing, then the site clearance and construction. And with that, I will turn it over to questions.
Brent has a question on this slide.
So if this is a a grant, why do we have a loan agreement, a promissory note and a deed of trust?
So it's not exactly a grant. And I'll let Rhiannon kind of explain how that funding transfer works.
So, Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for the question. So these are funds from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. They come with their own set of regulations and requirements. And so the loan and the regulatory agreement, it is a little deceiving in name, but this really is the parameters of how the program is to be utilized, the compliance over the 30 years with these units. This is the, that is the document that enforces it for us. The reason that we're saying a promissory note is because we do have that long-term relationship for 30 years with each other. But our intent is that so long as the units are compliant, we're going to forgive that note of 1/30th per year so that at the end of the 30 years, this is continues to be a long-term asset for the community. So that's why we enter into these legally binding documents.
So who who would own this facility, the rentals? So who would own the units?
The city of Pocatello would be the owner of the units.
And act as a landlord.
How you choose to manage the units is up to the determination internally. What was important for I H F A was that it was a property that was owned by the city because this is our first time of actually sub-granting funds to C D B G entitlement communities. And so we're, we're trying to take these small steps and this is the world that we do know, but having you all own your property was an easier step for us.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And in response to the landlord question, we have reached out to the the Housing Authority, Housing Alliance Community Partnership, because they are in the business of property management and particularly with folks that meet the HUD required, you know, area median income standards.
Right.
And so the goal would be to enter into an agreement with them where they would essentially manage the property as they do with their other affordable housing units so that the city isn't in the business of being a landlord and property manager.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Mangum.
That was my question.
That was your question?
All of those questions were.
Exactly.
Should have let him go.
Exactly.
Should have let him go, but he was pretty set on this one. I thought she had further to go. You're welcome. Councilmember Cheatham.
Would, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would other agencies qualify to be managers like Neighbor Works?
Yes, we could essentially, you know, enter into that agreement with with any agency that would qualify or that we would deem fit to do that. So through a lot of our C D B G programs, we did work closely with Neighbor Works and Habitat for Humanity to do infill lot development so the city would acquire the property and clear it. And then we have a property development agreement with Neighbor Works or Habitat to construct a house for, you know, an affordable housing unit. So we could certainly work with them. The Housing Authority has expressed interest in this, particularly being on the rental side. And they also offer project-based vouchers, which could help them achieve filling some of those vouchers on these units in particular. So there's nothing precluding us from working with Neighbor Works, so or or other agencies. It's just the Housing Authority as a quasi-governmental agency that I know has need and demand to fill some units as well, was our initial thought for that that role.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Would private property management companies also be eligible?
I think in that situation, we would put out a request for proposals and solicit for that role just because of the nature of what we need them to be able to do, particularly in terms of compliance with some of the agreement requirements related to maintaining the affordability and and things like that under a lot of the HUD guidelines, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mangum.
I think that the Housing Authority makes the most sense because of the voucher program, because they're already managing properties under those HUD guidelines and they're required to maintain all of that throughout all of their footprint. And so I think that this is a great use of this property and I would say that we should move forward this if that's what we're asking. Is there any, is there any financial burden or request, like a match per se from the city to execute this?
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for the question. There is not. Our Housing Trust Funds, because they are such low A M I, there is not a match requirement.
Just like to make a comment and echo what Cory said, the use of vouchers along with this project could be really a great mix.
What happens with the tax rules? It's not on the tax rules right now because it's city-owned. The idea would be to add to the tax, that's that's.
So.
The tax base.
If we continued with this program, the city would continue to own the the property so it wouldn't be on the tax rule. But at at the point that the city could potentially sell it, I mean, there's the the 30-year requirement that it has to be within that that L M I rental requirement. And that would would stay with with that property for that duration of that time. But the city could sell it at some point. And if it's prior to the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's prior to the 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 30 years, we would have to offset those those funds back to to repay those funds that were still outstanding. Or if the city held on to it until that duration was passed, then the city could then go ahead and sell it and and move on from from those properties, so.
Councilmember Nichols and then Council President. Councilmember Nichols and then Council President Lyric.
If we get to that point, one of the things I'd like to see would be some real sensitivity in the design to the neighborhood. You know, that's an existing neighborhood. The structure itself is sort of cued at one time. So, you know, you see a lot of, or sometimes housing units jammed into a traditional neighborhood and they just look out of place. And, you know, I don't think that'd be a service, good service to the neighborhood. So I'd like to see some real sensitivity in the design.
And, and to that point, Brent, or Councilmember Nichols, I agree with you. And that's the advantage of the city being involved in this process is that we can control what those would look like. If we subdivided and just sold the lots, which we could absolutely do, we would have no control over what actually gets developed there and what they look like, other than just our zoning ordinance. So, I mean, someone could build a lot more unsensitive type units in that, in that location.
Thank you.
So Council President Lyric and then Councilmember Bates.
That also is really important to me, that, that sensitivity to the design and that it sort of works with the existing neighborhood. So I like the idea that we would then have the ability to control that. But I also wanted to just make sure that I was understanding one thing that you were saying as far as if we were to sell the property before the 30 years. Would whoever bought it then have to meet those LMI requirements? That would be sort of part of the deal, so to speak?
Part of the deal.
Written into the, the sale?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's not a whole lot of individuals who are going to be interested in that restriction.
Right. So the ability to sell it might be, before that 30 years might be limited. But, but I definitely like the idea that we are not getting into the landlord business. I think there are a couple of different agencies that would be able to manage this, and I'd be comfortable with that. Housing Alliance is, is a good one, but I don't want to see us get into that business. But I, I love the, the way that you're addressing a real need in the community for affordable housing. So I applaud this project. I think it's really, this is good.
Councilmember Bates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have two questions. You know, there were multiple projects that you mentioned. Can you give me just a little more detail on why this project was selected over the others? And then, so the housing trust fund, the funds total a million, a little over a million dollars. Are we confident that will cover the entire project?
Sure. Yeah, so for the, part of the selection of this project was because of the amount of funding available. So we think we could definitely at least, you know, design all of the lots and then hopefully construct up to that six. Depending on what that construction cost looks like, we may have to reduce that number. But the goal is to get the six units. And, you know, Brent, I mean, you can probably speak more to the construction costs.
Yeah, so the, the, there's probably not enough funding in this to cover six, the, the six units in, in their entirety. And so that's the, we would hope that we could get, you know, maybe four of them done and then in future years, pull more money to, to do the remainder or sell off a lot or two if we, if we wanted to. But we, we would have to work that out and, and that process. That million dollars isn't enough to build, build them in their entirety, I wouldn't think. But we have to look at, at, at those costs. Because we do have to remove the existing building and abate it and, and then do all the land prep and, and all the utility preps and, and all that, that would have to go with it as well. The other reason why this project was selected over the others is timing. We have funds that are, need to be allocated this summer. And this is the only one that we could move fast enough on to utilize those funds. And, and the other projects were quite substantially larger, like Christine said, that they, a million dollars wouldn't put a dent in, in those, those other projects. So that's kind of the reasoning.
Yeah, but we feel pretty confident in the four units with the million.
We can get the four units.
And Mayor, Councilmember, if I may, part of the other issue with some of the other sites is because of the environmental review, there were already actions from demolition or construction that had taken place. And that's what we consider a choice limiting action, which rendered our funds ineligible to be put in on those.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paulson.
Is there a minimum amount of units that have to be built with the 1.05?
Mayor, Councilmember, no.
Okay, thank you.
Council. Are you looking for direction to move forward with this? Sounds.
Yeah, ideally, we would bring, you know, the, the kind of final form of this application, so to speak, to the council. Our goal would be the July 3rd council meeting, just so we can get started on that timeline that we're up against with these funds. So if there is general direction to, to move forward with that process, we'll start working on that to bring before you for acceptance at a future meeting.
Okay. I, I see some thumbs up from people. I, I will tell you, there is some, there is a group of people that, there's, there's some historic value in this facility. It's the last remaining Alameda, City of Alameda asset and building that they had there. And so I, I would hope that we would be working to preserve something from there, recognizing the City of Alameda and, and stuff if we, you move forward with this. But I've got, had a number of thumbs up, up here, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one last question?
Sure.
Thank you. Does demolition, I'm a little concerned about the timetable with the shortage we seem to have of contractors in our community of late. Does demolition count as construction?
Yep.
So we could tear it down and meet the 12-month qualification? Okay.
Council President.
Quick thing. I was thinking about what the mayor just said about the historic importance of this building and it's kind of the last piece of something. But to Brent's point earlier about the design sensitivity to the neighborhood, I was thinking that might, there might be a way that we could sort of honor that, that history through the way we design it and maybe preserve some element or piece, architectural element that we put in the new design or, but that could be a way to acknowledge that history. But I think that's important to think about. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four is Fire Reporting Change Update and Software Solutions Presentation. Fire Department staff members will provide an overview of recent changes to incident data reporting requirements and the state's implementation of the National Emergency Response Information System and proposed solutions to address the results, the resulting software needs.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Ryan O'Hern, Fire Chief. So we are looking to replace some existing software systems and, which would require entering into a new contract with this company. And so I just wanted to present to you today kind of why the change, what it means and the steps forward. So we currently report to the National Fire Incident Reporting System. That's a legacy system that has been around for 50 years. Excuse me. And a few years ago, the National Fire Administration proposed greatly increasing the capacity and abilities of that system. And they, and so in, in the fall of 2024, they unveiled a new system called the National Emergency Response Information System. And this is more of an all-hazards approach to data gathering and incident reporting. And so it's going to be a much more robust system. Our region is scheduled to transition in October of this year and transition is mandatory. As of January 1st of 2026, there will be no reporting in the legacy system. And so we will have to move to a new reporting system. The system that we're currently using is not going to be compliant with new standards. And so that necessitates a new fire incident reporting system. Currently, we use many different software platforms for all of our different functions, from scheduling to patient care reporting, fire reporting, training, fire investigations and pre-incident planning. And because all of these, we have six or seven different platforms. We have companies that write APIs, which, application program interface to get platforms to talk to each other so that you're not, it minimizes data entry redundancy, but it doesn't eliminate it. And so we currently have that. We'd like to use this as an opportunity to bring all of those different platforms under a single sign-on platform. We looked at many different platforms and we settled with First Do. We felt that it was probably the best in class and offered the best platform overall. It is a single sign-on, so all of the systems will talk to each other, which leads to better data sharing. So we don't have to enter, for example, the personnel that are on a call in our patient care report and in our fire report and in our daily log. We can just have that communicate cross-platform. So it'll eliminate that redundancy and reduce the amount of time that our people are spending with data entry and reporting. And this platform actually will be cheaper than the, the conglomerate of our current platforms. So we'll save about $1,500 a year by moving to this platform versus what we're spending on all of the various platforms. We feel like it'll greatly enhance our capabilities. It does contain some modules that we don't currently have access to. Some of those are incident management and personnel tracking on a fire so that we can do better accountability and time on task tracking. It does have a better asset management program to track personal protective equipment and SCVAs and other equipment like that, which will be very beneficial. And to, to Chris Sorensen's presentation earlier, it does have an AI integration where people can, our, our providers can kind of speak into the system and basically narrate what they did on a call. And it will put it into the various buckets for reporting requirements. And so we think that it is going to be a very beneficial move. I did mention that it is going to be less expensive. Our FY25 budget for the platforms that I mentioned is just over $53,000. And the FY26 budget that we would spend if we moved to this new platform would be 52. And so it is about a $1,400 a year savings. We did adjust our funding in our software line down this year to help cover that budget number to bring in a flat operating budget. There is a $24,000 implementation cost. $15,000 of that is one quarter of usage from July, August and September. And we would have access to both systems and that would allow us time to train on the new system and also migrate legacy data into the new system so that we don't lose any information or data. And then on top of that $15,000, there is almost a $10,094,800 to, for the actual training component and for the company to help us with that data migration. So that is an upfront cost. We would be able to cover that in our existing software line and operating budget for FY25.
Chief, Councilmember Mangum.
So it sounds like after December, either way, we got to do something.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And with these costs, there's a certain amount that comes from the county. Do we know?
Correct. I think I may have this on this text. The county, we're going to split the cost 50/50. So out of the $52,000, 26 of that would come from the ambulance budget and 26 would come from the, the, our operating budget in the fire department.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Nichols and then Councilmember Cheatham.
Does the county kick in on the 24 implementation?
Yes, we're going to use county funds for that as well. And that'll be a 50/50 split.
Has the county agreed to that already?
We, we didn't present this. This will be a contract between First Do and the City of Pocatello. We do have existing operating lines in our budget and we'll just manage that through our operating budget.
So does, I guess I need to, the, the county connection has me concerned. Do they have this money budgeted in their budget for sharing, for cost sharing?
Yes, this will actually be a reduction in the amount that we have asked the county for because we are projecting cost savings on both budgets.
Well, I guess the 24, 8, 12, the implementation is in the 25 budget.
Correct.
How is that money being covered?
We're going to pull from some other lines and then we do have money in anticipation of some of these software costs that, that we're not going to execute. We're going to pay the implementation instead and move forwards.
But the county will share in that also?
Yes.
Do they know that?
I'm happy to tell them that.
Not yet, no.
They do now, if they're watching.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, yes. Councilmember Bates.
Chief, that $52,000 annual cost, do we know how, is that a contract amount for a certain amount of years or what's the limit on the increase in costs?
So they did, we do have the contract and if you're supportive of us making this transition, we will bring it to the, the council meeting in July to execute. There is a five, there's a cap on a 5% annual increase.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Mangum.
Some of these, some of the capabilities here, it's got some great capabilities. Some of these capabilities, will they respond or connect to like the police department also? Because some calls that they go out on, you'll go out on or vice versa. So are they going to communicate in any way or?
It will not communicate back, but it, we get information into this system from our CAD, our computer aided dispatch system that we share with the police department. And so it will come from there to this system like it does in our current form. We do have systems that we're using now that that information comes over. They don't talk back to the CAD system just because of security with Motorola, but they will be able to access some of this information.
Okay. Okay. You okay seeing this coming in July? Okay?
Yeah.
Sounds like.
Thank you.
We'll see you then. All right, Agenda Item Five, Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Development. Council, I promised you that we would have some worksheets, the worksheets for you to be able to look at and consider for the rest of the month. We found some changes in the F, in the transit world's federal stuff. And so we don't have those prepared yet for you, but we will have them for you on Monday unavailable. So I apologize for that, but that came up yesterday morning. And so we, we needed to get that fixed before we got any of that to you. So with that, I pulled the Agenda Item Five, but please be looking for that stuff on Monday. And then we'll move to Agenda Item Six is Council Advisory Board. I'll go ahead and kick us off. The Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, we don't meet until the beginning of the year and we haven't had a meeting since. So there's my report. Councilmember Bates won't have a report, so we'll do him next. And we've already got two of us down, so let's see how the rest of you.
We're going from easiest to hardest.
Why don't we have Councilmember Nichols get, go ahead and kick us off.
I don't have much of anything to report. The Human Relations Advisory Council didn't meet. The Audit Committee only meets quarterly and I missed the animal shelter meeting, so nothing to report.
Okay, super. See, we're on a roll here. Councilmember Paulson.
So CECA has finished the St. Anthony Place Audit, but the big one is. So CECA has finished the St. Anthony Place Audit, but the big one is in process. They're working on their strategic plan. Biggest thing is increased funding. In July, there's a fundraiser called Hand Up, because the whole thing is like, it's a hand up, not a handout. The 2024 impact statement should be on their website now, but there's a $5 million impact to the community. And then the 100th House will be done in July, working on loans for two more houses. Should have just closed on two more houses, and two are for sale. And August 22nd is the Project Warmth Golf Tournament in Soda Springs, if you would like to attend that. Then Parks and Rec, at our AIC thing in Boise, Parks will be getting an award for Brooklyn's Playground and the Splash Pad. Skate Park is on schedule to be done in July. Main needs that we will likely see in the coming months, year, still the Riverside Clubhouse. People want more tennis courts, playground equipment replacement, parking lot improvements, especially at Lower Ross Park area, and more trail connections. And, oh, the Rec Center improvements. People are clearly loving it, because with 58% of the year done, the Rec Center made 95% of the projected revenue. So doing good.
It's all weather-related on some of those things, and so the hotter it is, the better we are at the pool. I know that, so pray for heat.
Oh, and with CDBG, we did a tour of the free clinic, and I don't remember if it was 4,600 or 4,800 people last year, but just based as percentage of Pocatello, that's like 8% of Pocatellans who use the free clinics, so, yeah.
Good, alrighty. Council President Lyrc?
Audit and Investment Committee, Brent already mentioned, we meet quarterly, so we haven't had a meeting since I last reported. Historic Downtown Pocatello Board, we did meet and mainly focused on discussing what's coming up for the summer, what the plans are. Stephanie Pelagi gave a, an update to the board on the Center Street underpass, and people are happy that that will be open for the summer, so things are moving ahead. And we had had our annual meeting, I'm not sure if I had reported on that or not, but the accomplishments and all the programming that's been added and the numbers of people that have come to things and everything were very impressive. It was a long list of things, so a growing list of activities happening downtown, as well as buildings being sold and bought and new businesses coming in and opening. So a lot of good things happening down there. Banning Transportation and Planning, we met, was that this week?
Yeah.
I was trying to remember. It seems a long time ago, but also not. Anyway, we had a good meeting. Devin Hillam is the new director, and there's the overlap with Maury, the previous director, and they're sort of getting him up to speed. He seems to have jumped in and is doing well. We talked about some updates to the different plans. My famous nickname for the one plan seems to have been adopted by the state, was it? I don't know.
I think the state called it.
The upwup, which I can't even remember what it stands for, but there's a couple of plans that they do that we have to look at amendments for and update. So we discussed those, but had also a good discussion on some of the legislation that came out of this last session about restricting bike-ped traffic and lanes, dedicated lanes on roadways. And apparently, you know, highways are sort of very generally defined as a street. So there were, there's some concerns about limitations, because we've, in all the plans we've been discussing over the years, it's been with, you know, sort of the idea of moving towards bike-ped friendliness, and now the legislation has kind of affected that. So discussion of how that would impact plans in our area specifically, and some changes that we might be looking for to that legislation. That was a good discussion. And then lastly, the PDA, and we did meet, and it was a pretty brief meeting. Not a lot of new stuff discussed, but the feasibility study for the new South Fifth Area and looking at that as a potential TIF district, that's proceeding. So there's just kind of things that are underway. Not a very long meeting, and that's all I have to report.
Sounds good. Councilmember Mangum?
Golf Advisory Committee, golfers are golfing.
They're cussing, they're not golfing.
All the above. They'd like a clubhouse, which, yeah, they'd like a clubhouse. So the Housing Authority, they've got a lot of good things going on. They've got a lot of vouchers out now. They're working on a couple of projects to develop some units here within the area to help with the affordable housing issues. Jared Mangum, no relation, that we know of, is doing a great job since he took over as the Executive Director. Doing a really good job, he and his team, so kudos to them. Neighbor Works Pocatello, they're always moving and doing something incredible here in the community. They have their Pay It Forward event going on today, June 12th, at Caldwell Park, from 4:00 to 6:00. They're excited about the dedication of Purse Park, July 3rd at noon. And so there's a lot of good stuff going on with these different committees.
Super. Councilmember Cheatham?
Lynda did a good job reporting Banning Transportation, so I did not go into that. I missed the airport meeting, because we were in council session on Tuesday when that committee met at noon. So the only one I have really to report on is the Senior Activity Center. Some really good news coming out of the activities over there. In May, they served 1,876 meals to 372 seniors, and that's up from last year of 1,336 meals to 288 seniors.
It's up from what she presented.
Yeah. Well, this is May.
Yeah. This is the newest.
And the congregate donations are also up. In '24, they had $1,342 in congregate donations during the meal in the month of May. This year was $1,943. Unfortunately, that still leads to a net loss. Every time they serve a meal, they lose $6.48. So they're trying to encourage further congregate donations. Overall, for the month of May, the senior center had a net loss of $2,558.14, which there are months they have their down, and they get big donations like we make or the county makes or other organizations make, and that helps to see them through these harder times, when they lose a little bit each month. They're still working on the Meals on Wheels program through CECA to take that over, and hope when they do that, that additional food prep and so forth will be kind of combined in what they're doing, and that should lower their congregate meal costs also. So that should help their overall financial situation a little bit. But it's a lot of things going on over there. They had a guy walk in who lives in the neighborhood, walked in a few weeks ago and said, hey, put me to work. So he has completely repainted the kitchen area. They bought the paint. He provided all his old, his own tools, and came in and did it all on his own time. Repainted the door frames, he's starting on those, repainting those old ugly brown doors and frames that were brown, putting it all black, painted all the walls white, replaced some tile, came in and fixed a ceiling problem around their electrical service system that the Health Department wanted done. People are constantly chipping in and doing things over there to keep that place going. If you haven't taken a tour since the Lowe's reconstruction of the bathrooms and all the new hallway painting things, Mayor and I went over there a couple weeks ago and had lunch, and it's something to see. That place has been transformed in the last year by community donations and volunteers. What they're short of right now are daily volunteers to help with the tasks of serving and managing the facility. So what they're looking for are people who can come in and say, hey, every Wednesday, I'd like to come over there and put in a few hours, or I'll do it every, you know, twice a month, or, so you can get a schedule built, particularly in the summer, when a lot of their regulars are vacationing or visiting family and other places. So they need some volunteers to come in and help with a lot of different tasks within the center that they're doing.
You don't need to be of a certain age to volunteer there, do you?
Nope. There's anybody, there's all kinds of people who come in to volunteer, and they get youth groups. School may have an event coming on, and they'll bring over a student class, and they'll come in and do something, or, there's just all kinds of opportunities for members of the community of all age groups to come in and do things that, just help them do things. They just replaced all the flooring over there in the dining room. You and I were over there, we saw that. And they finished the redo of that, because there was a problem with the materials they had used, but they had to clean everything out of that dining room. And they came in on Monday, getting ready for service on Tuesday, and realized they had no one scheduled to help reset the room. But one volunteer came in and said, I'll take care of it. Go on and do your job. And he did it all by himself, reset the entire room. So they, they need that kind of stuff. They've got a lot of things going on. Car show this Saturday at Union Pacific. Parking lot downtown goes from 9:00 to 3:00. If you're bringing a car, you need to be there by 7:30.
I think I'll take my car down. I love the Toyota Corolla.
The Senior Games this year are July 9th through the 19th. I wanted to remind the mayor of the Senior Games trap shoot on the 12th.
Oh, yeah?
You qualify for that now.
Thank you. Thanks for reminding me of that.
The Senior Games Golf Tournament is, the Senior Center Golf Tournament is also September 6th, and.
I heard they renamed the Senior Games. Is that not true?
No.
Somebody said that at the.
Southeast Idol Senior Games.
Okay.
But just a lot going on over there. And I, on Tuesday of this week, their big meal every month is when they serve chicken fried steak.
Everybody looks for that.
Everybody watches for chicken fried steak. I served there, I've been able to serve. I ate there yesterday and had an excellent meal. The, they've made some changes due to some demands from people about what they get. People are looking for more protein and less carbs, so they're trying to make the change. And they're using the food bank more for providing things that help lower their food costs. It, there were 137 people showed up Tuesday for the chicken fried steak. After being closed an entire week, last week, they had 137 people show up for the meal on Tuesday. Yesterday, every seat was full in the dining room for the lunch hour.
Well, I'll tell you, when we went and had lunch there a couple weeks ago, it was not Chicken Fried Steak Day, and it was a pretty good meal.
It was.
And so.
Yesterday, it was turkey and bacon club sandwiches and butterscotch pudding, and I mean, it, bag of Doritos, it was, it was a good meal. Little fruit thing and.
Did you say chicken fried steak is every Tuesday or no?
No, no. They usually do that once a month.
Once a month, okay.
Then they try to move it around, so it's not regularly scheduled, so people, unless you're following the menu, you don't know what you're going to have every day, so. But it's, it brings a good crowd. There's one little problem that I think they talked to Ann about yesterday. We've got a pop-up sprinkler head right on the corner of a sidewalk that's broken off and isn't going down. They're concerned about a trip hazard. Did she call you? Yeah. I looked at it after the meeting, and Tara said she was going to call Ann and get that taken care of. But the facility's in better condition than I've ever seen it since I've been going over there the last eight years.
Nice.
All right. Well, Council, thank you. Thank you for those reports. And with that, we are adjourned.